Honorable Mayor, we are live on YouTube and Zoom and ready to begin the meeting.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the Monday, May 16th, special workshop meeting, hybrid meeting of the Livermore City Council, and we're going to be focusing on the budget. So call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Carling?
Here.
Councilmember Kick?
Here.
Councilmember Monroe?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Here.
Mayor Werner?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a special workshop. So the public comment is restricted to the items on the workshop, not just the general like we do in Citizens Forum. So could the Assistant City Clerk please explain the process for people to participate?
Yes, Mayor. When participating in this evening's meeting, one comment may be given per person for items only listed on the agenda. Members of the public can participate by completing a speaker card if in person, or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or star nine if calling in. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you.
Okay, our one item for tonight is 3.1, the proposed fiscal 2021-23 financial plan update. And do we have any members of the public that wish to address this?
No mayor, no request to speak.
Either in person or online?
Correct. No requests to speak have been submitted.
Okay, I'll close the public comment at this point, and could we then have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I wanted to give a quick introduction of what we're doing this evening. So this is the proposed financial update for the second year of your two-year budget. And there's a lot of unusual things this year, so it's going to be a little more involved than a normal second-year update. As you remember, a year ago, the city council adopted its two-year budget, stretching from essentially June 30th of a year ago to essentially the next June. When we do a two-year budget halfway through, essentially at this time, we revisit where we are. We update anything that needs to be updated in that two-year budget, and then the council adopts those updates. And you'll see, as we conclude this evening, our recommendation is for you to give us direction this evening on any adjustments that you'd like to this draft budget presentation. And then we'll return to adopt the budget in June. And of course, we are required by law to adopt a budget before the end of the fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. So the presentation you're going to see tonight will have several different parts. The first is concentrated on simply updating you with new numbers. So a budget is a forward-looking document. And in our case, we were doing a forward-looking document during a pandemic, which was a highly variable timeframe. And so we need to update the numbers to reflect where we are on our various revenue sources and our various expenses. Because of coming out of the pandemic, we actually have a number of one-time revenues and one-time expenses. In addition to that, we have some unique circumstances from essentially building large-scale infrastructure with cash on hand that we had saved for over a number of years, to having some new revenue come online that we'll talk more about that has essentially some backward-looking portion of those revenues, which will be one-time revenues. So we're going to spend quite a bit of time on sort of one-time revenue and expenses. You'll remember last year, as we were getting ready to adopt the budget, the council had a number of questions about specific positions that we would like to add to the budget. Your staff, being very conservative in us not being out of the pandemic then, and of course, we're not completely out of it even now, noted that we would see how sort of that next year ran, and then we would return to you at this time with recommendations on new budget positions. And because things have actually turned out relatively well for us during the second year of the, or the first year of the budget process, but during the second year of the pandemic, we have a little more stability than we had a year ago, and we'll be making recommendations based on that stability for dealing with some new positions. And that's going to be more than we have done in the past. Finally, we're going to talk about our long-term obligations. You'll remember that 10 years ago, we began a journey out of the recession that had a couple of large-scale objectives. The first was to balance essentially our short-term revenues and expenditures. You'll remember that the recession caused, exposed the fact that even on our short-term expenditures, we did not have the revenues to cover that. During the recession, we laid off nearly 100 positions, or eliminated those through three waves, and have had very modest gains over time. And that's because essentially we use staffing as the major limitation to limit the growth of our expenditures during the last 10-year period. We wanted to do that to give our long-term expenditures, including our long-term obligations and our long-term revenue projections, time to catch up with one another. That is, in other words, constrain expenditures long enough for revenues to catch up. We are at that time when we've crossed over, where those are actually now in balance. So you'll see essentially the recommendations this evening reflect that fact that we're going to go from a highly constrained type of budgeting to one that has a little more flexibility been built into it to address both our long-term obligations and to allow some growth over time. Obviously, we want to be very careful about that going forward, but we wanted to set the table. So we have more things in our budget update for our operating budget than we would normally have. In addition to the operating budget this evening, we'll also have Bob Ben, our city engineer, update our capital improvement program budget, noting the things that we've accomplished, and there's some pretty exciting things in there. You're all aware of that. You've seen them out in the community, as well as the things that are still on our list, and what our constraints are under that program moving forward. And then finally, we'll wrap up with sort of next steps that we are proposing, both the adoption of the budget and the adoption of, or the presentation of some policies going forward. We'll be looking for feedback from you this evening on the items that we're presenting to you, and we'll do that in order to get the budget back to you by the end of June, and then take direction on some of the longer-term assignments that we're going to present, at least in a framework state this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Administrative Services Director, Tina Olson, who's going to start us off with the numbers and beginning our updating. Before I hand it off any questions before we get started, there'll be lots of time for questions later on. Very good. All right, with that, Tina, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tina Olson, Director of Administrative Services. So Mark and I will be tagging this presentation, going through numbers and. So this first slide, it's from the budget message. I'm going to go over both the current year budget, because we true-upped the current year, which is 2021-22 budget, as well as the next year's budget, the 2022-23. For the current year, as Mark noted, when the city put the budget together last year, we're very conservative on revenue estimates. We now feel confident we can increase those revenue estimates in both years. And so operating revenues for 2021-22, we're proposing to increase by 10.2 million. I have a, next slide, we'll go over what those revenues are. The use of unassigned reserves are going down by 4.8 million because of the increased revenues. So we're not going to have to draw on as much reserves to cover some one-time expenses, which was primarily the capital improvement plan for the current year. And then we're proposing to reduce transfers in by three, almost 3.6 million, the 3,572. And that's really to acknowledge a practice that the city has had for several years. We had several years ago budgeted to charge administrative fees, mostly to the CIP Development Impact Funds, but other CIP funds. And we learned, we don't have the authority to charge those fees, and so we hadn't. And now we're adjusting the budget as well to reflect that practice. On the operating expenditure side, adjustments downward for all the different categories in 2021-22, except for the contribution to reserves that we're proposing to increase by $3 million. And then going over to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget, looking at revenue increase of about $8 million. Again, we'll go over that in another slide. The use of unassigned reserves increased by $749,000. We're also proposing to use the $2 million reserve for ERP, the Enterprise Resource Program that council put into place at the end of 2021 with the budget surplus, because we're going to be starting that project next year. And then transfers in reduced by one, almost 1.3 million, same explanation from before. And then when we get into the operating expenditures, we do have a significant increase of 8.5 million. I've got a slide that will go through what all of those increases are. Transfers out decreased by 964,000, the CIP up by 800,000, and then contributions to reserves up by 1.1 million. We included over to the right, a summary of one-time revenues and one-time expenses. As the city manager noted, this budget does include significant one-time expenses, and so we thought it was worthwhile to call those out. So you can see, operating expenditures, 7.3 million of the current year budget is one-time in nature. In the budget year, it's 8.6 million, almost 8.7 million. And then the Capital Improvement Program, 13 and a half million in the current year, and almost 2 million next year. So it's over about $31 million in one-time expenses in this two-year budget. There we go. And this is the summary of the revenues. And the property tax, I know it looks like maybe property taxes are going down. That's just really an adjustment. Staff had estimated an increase and continues to estimate an increase in property taxes for the current year, but it's less than we thought by about 937,000. So we're making that adjustment. And then next year, there's a slight adjustment upwards, but property taxes are continuing to increase. Sales and use taxes, that's really where we've got the big increases in both years. Three, almost three and a half million for the current year. This is an area where staff really didn't know how we were going to come out of the pandemic, and so we're conservative. And we put the budget together, and then about $2.5 million adjustment next year. The other big category that we're seeing an increase is business license taxes. And the two labs, Lawrence Livermore Lab and the Sandy Laboratories, hadn't been paying the city business license taxes since they incorporated into the city, and the city's consultant HCL found that out. And the city's been working with the two labs to make the payment both ongoing, and then we can get a three-year catch-up. We do not have a three-year catch-up for either of the labs in the budget, because we haven't settled on that number with the two labs. The Sandy Laboratories, we've settled on the ongoing amount, so that's reflected. It's a little over $1 million in the business license. But the Lawrence Livermore Lab ongoing amount that we think could be up to $2 million is not in this budget. So I just wanted to make that clear. The other taxes, that's the transient occupancy tax or hotel taxes in there, as well as property transfer taxes are both up. So that's what's comprising both the 1.6 million you'll see in 21-22 increase and the 1.3 million in 22-23. And then the other big category, big increase that we see is other revenue. There's about a $1.5 million pass-through of property taxes coming from the county and going to Vineyard 2.0.
That's exactly right. Vineyard 2.0?
Project. It's the 2.0 that gets me. I'm going to go on. There we go. So this is the, this slide goes through that $8.5 million in expenditure increases. So as the city manager noted, we do have eight new positions, or it's 6.5 full-time equivalent in the budget. We'll be going through each one of those new positions. There's also 653,000 in there, and it's for both consultant services for the general plan update, as well as consultant services and contract employees to help backfill the planning department staff, who are going to be focused on the general plan update. We have another, and this is a significant increase, that's also one-time in nature, is $3.1 million under that modernization category of the council priorities. This is almost all in IT, my departments. Some of that's for cybersecurity contracts. The ERP that we noted earlier, which can replace the city's financial and human resources system. We have a lot of IT system upgrades, replacing about 50% of the city's computers. There's also a police training simulator. So those are all one-time expenses. We got $1 million approximately, and that's going to grants to nonprofits, homeless, and affordable housing-type projects. I was ready to. I can remember if those were right. You want to?
So that included essentially a number of items that, as we came out of the pandemic, you'll remember that we had a variety of funding sources that helped us with our unhoused populations and special programs. These dollars are helping us through that transition period as those funding sources from mainly the federal and state governments ended. And some of these, these dollar amounts are available to be fed into the county's support system long-term. So examples of this would be dollars that were the goodness village, where they were having startup costs with that particular facility and are rightsizing their overall administration and support out there. We're helping them prepare to move forward over the long run. Dollars that we spend taking care of both our homeless population and impacts from those, making sure that those are in the proper categories. You'll remember the calls on service during the pandemic, especially for our low-income population, was especially significant. So another one of these items, of course, was rent support. You'll remember that was one of our programs here, where we matched county dollars with that to push those dollars forward. So we have a number of items here. These are essentially one-time costs, because this is the bridge between the pandemic support that we got and actually returning to a steady state. And in some of the cases, these will be ultimately, the costs will not be there any longer, will not continue and expanded, for example, rent subsidy program or downtown subsidy programs. On the other hand, where they will go on forward, we're helping them to connect with county resources and other resources going forward. So while this is a one-time expense, this is something that's going to need to be watched very closely as we get back together a year from now to make that budget going forward, because there's some of these costs that we may need to do minor adjustments with. So in others, while it's one time, they might not completely disappear as we move forward.
Thank you. He had a more expansive explanation than I would have provided. So the next category is LPFD. So that's a total increase of 1.2 million. As you know, the city shares the fire department with the city of Pleasanton, and the way that we fund those expenses, both personnel and non-personnel, is through the non-personnel services and supplies. So we have, it's 1.2 million, and includes LPFD overtime increases. We have a .5 full-time equivalent battalion chief that we're going to explain a little bit. They had an increase in their insurance premiums, and then the SCBA equipment.
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Yeah, that's a one-time expense. And then for the city, we also had an increase in, for 240,000, and that's in the claims and liability reserves, and that's based on claims that are in the pipeline for the city. All right, I'm going to turn this one over to Mark to talk through the new positions.
So Tina noted that we have a six-and-a-half full-time equivalent spread across eight positions. And so I just wanted to spend a quick minute on that. All of these positions are tied directly to council goal, previous council direction, or items necessary to backfill, where we have significant differential between calls for service and essentially ability to provide that service. So first up is the stormwater manager. This position was discussed by the council at our last budget workshop a year ago, and the decision was made to push it to this period to see whether we have adequate resources. This, while stormwater is technically an enterprise, it is backfilled by the general fund, because there's not enough resources in that enterprise fund. This position would manage the city's stormwater program, including regulatory compliance, interaction with the multiple departments and outside agencies, as well as work with staff to identify means of repairing, replacing, and maintaining the city's stormwater infrastructure systems. So this is two sides. This is part of your asset management program overall. But storm, of course, anybody who's dealt with that knows the additional complexity of the myriad of agencies that help us with storm. And I use that term euphemistically. The battalion chief, the halftime position there, this is a whole person. So the other half is paid for by Pleasanton. And you'll remember, this has been a three-year process, where we have added a full position each of the last two years. And so we're now at the point where you'll remember that our fire department is the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation. And so it takes three people to cover essentially the 168 hours in a week. What this will allow us to do is to go from one battalion chief on duty, i.e. three positions, to two battalion chiefs on duty. In other words, one for each of the two cities. So the math always works, so you have to have three positions to get one person to cover. So that means that we'll have two battalion chiefs, one in Livermore and one in Pleasanton. 25 years ago, when the fire department was created, we cut essentially the battalion chief position from two to one at that period, because of essentially the idea that one could serve the entire area. In that time, in the last 25 years, the call volume has roughly doubled. And so what we found is the battalion chief, which is both a commander on scene for a large, complex issues, and the administrative interface with essentially line staff, was using most of their time to deal with large-scale events, much more than it had 25 years ago. This completes the transition to allow us to have much better span of control. This battalion chief will be responsible for ultimately 17 staff at any one time versus the 34 that are on duty at any one time now. And of course, that's really important to have the department work effectively and efficiently. Next on that list is the library position. It's a halftime position, but essentially we're cobbling together a couple of different things to get a full-time person doing this. This is a net add. Positions responsible for forming equitable community outreach to educate Livermore citizens on the services offered by the Livermore Public Library. And so this position in particular is actually outward-facing to serve underserved groups. This was identified in your equity and inclusion work that you did earlier in the year for us to look as part of our overall goals. At any time, we're offering city services to make sure that those are actually pushed out to those among the community that are the most in need, or those that are not our frequent customers on there. Senior civil engineers, the last of this first grouping, in that position leads a team of engineers and technicians, as well as manages consultants, and they contract for both capital projects, land development, transportation, downtown implementation, and other assignments. This position is the first of ultimately several we will need as we ramp up our infrastructure repair and replacement programs over time. So while this person doesn't directly actually do the drawings and things, having adequate oversight for our contractors who do the bulk of this work and make sure that that is coordinated and integrated with staff is an essential part of us ultimately being able to move forward. On the next slide, the first item on that one is our IT engineer and water SCADA. So essentially, this position will work at the plant as an IT systems administrator responsible for implementing and managing the technology infrastructure that hosts the supervisory control and data acquisition system. So I know you want to know what SCADA meant, so we said that out loud for you. But essentially, is not only sort of doing that direct support for that particular system, which is very useful and actually helps us run a very complex plant very efficiently out there, is also part of the overall IT team that helps from time to time with citywide initiatives. And would sort of be in addition to, of course, our IT folks who support library, our IT folks who support police department, while they have essentially a primary responsibility, they are part of the overall IT network that helps us do the wide variety of things. Next item on the list is a crime analyst. And the crime analysts are responsible for collecting and disseminating pertinent information that assists the police department to plan, prevent, and suppress criminal activities. This position will be assigned to the real-time awareness center to monitor real-time cameras, alerts, and other systems to provide immediate information to on-duty patrol officers and detectives. We've been using a version of this system on an ongoing basis. This allows us to ramp that up. It's been very helpful while events are happening to feed information out to folks who are in the field. And this again is part of our program to use technology to help our officers who are out in the field make sure that they understand what they're stepping into, what the ramifications are, and in a lot of cases, actually being able to connect the dots much faster in real time than we would have been able to without this position. The next item is a crisis intervention specialist, and this will work with, this position will work with patrol officers in a co-responder model. And the crisis intervention specialist will provide emergency crisis assessment and intervention services in the field, as well as assist with linkage to outpatient mental health services and family support services. This is another position that was identified during our equity work, and again, continues to push us forward in an area where the police are called for a whole variety of emergency responses, where essentially enforcement and a gun is not the tool that you need to use to take care of the situation. This, while it is a full-time permanent position, will help us learn exactly how to deploy this particular set of services in the field. So we're very excited about moving forward with this, because exactly how often will they travel to the field? Who will they be accompanied with in the field, essentially? What will they do on the follow-up? How much of their time will be in the field? How much of their time will be in the office? All of those questions, this new position will get to be a part of the architect in sort of creating the answer for that, and then ultimately figuring out what's the proper way to staff this long-term? Do we need another position just like this one? Do we need a different position? Do we need multiple halftime positions? All of those are part of what we're doing. We're looking to other places throughout the country, learning from what they have done in this. We're doing it a little bit differently than some, but just exactly like other places. So again, we'll know a lot more as we deploy this and learn. It's a very exciting piece, and it sort of furthers the approach that we've been using in the Department of Deeskalation and making sure that we're getting the right services to people when they call 911. Finally, the item, last item on the list is a climate action manager. And this is essentially, while climate action plan didn't make your goals, I was told, you know, that it almost did, which is, which is so close. However, we did, as a part of the climate action plan, we, the council overall, has reviewed its goals and will be ultimately adopting the program and moving forward with implementation. Staff was particularly concerned about the issue of implementation. How do we go from having the focus of the community on new programs, processes, and things that we can do as a leader, both as an organization and to push information out to the community, and making sure that the efforts that we've been doing right now, as we've been writing that program and bringing it through the approval process, so we don't miss a step moving forward? So this position, essentially, again, we will be taking a look at our overall city operation, figuring out exactly where this position fits, how it will do the implementation, and how we'll coordinate all of the activities that we're already doing. This position is not going to do everything we have to do around sustainability, but will be a coordinator, a facilitator, will be the one responsible for making sure that others do this. So we're very excited about moving forward and being able to sort of fund this position as we move forward. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Tina.
Can I jump in with a question?
Yes.
Sorry. For the climate action, we said it's not a goal, because it should be everywhere, all the time, everything. That was our way of sneaking it in, I think. But for the crime analyst halftime, is that paid for by something else full-time? Or is it another halftime position being put together with it? And then the library, I think you said, was another halftime?
And I failed to mention that, but that is correct. We are, we are moving a halftime open position from another spot.
Okay. Cool.
Okay, so as I said in the first slide, we noted that we had $31.6 million in one-time expenses, and this is the listing of those expenses. So the number one is the 15.5 million for the CIP. Most of that is going for the I Street Garage expansion. And ER, and remember, this is for the two years, not just the increased amount. So total for the ERP and the IT modernization that I went through, earlier was the increase, the total amount in the two-year budget is 4.2 million. We had a total of 5.2 million added to reserves. The housing and other grounds, the total was 1.3 million. Police and LPFD equipment is 800,000. Planning consultants for the general plan and the contract staff, that's a total of a little over $3 million. Uh, for the general plan and the contract staff, that's a total of a little over three million dollars. And then the pass-through property taxes is one point five million.
So have a real quick question.
Yeah.
And expenditures, but the five point two million went to reserves?
Yeah.
So it really wasn't spent, right?
No, but it's a sort of in that what's the one-time use? Probably use is a better way to put it.
Yeah, yeah, just because it's not being spent.
Yeah, that's a good point. And uh, I did have a little note over there. So when we, because we wanted to make sure that the ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses is sustainable. Um, when we pull out these one-time expense and uses, it's a a four and a half million dollar surplus over the two years.
And and on the uh reserve. You know, transferred to reserves, it's one time because of why?
Because it's just this one. I mean, it's it's a not necessarily ongoing, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not required. So in other words, we deal with that. Um, so reserves is ultimately where um the dollars come because of of the uh. In other words, it's increased based on your expenditures. But in other words, it doesn't come back and you don't need another four point two million dollars next year. So from that perspective, it is a a one-time event.
Because it's one-time use. It's also calculated with the one-time expenses.
Because we don't, we don't exclude the one-time expenses when we're sort of doing the reserve policy.
Can I say a quick question while we're while we're in stop for a second? I think you may have mentioned this, but maybe not explicitly, the fifteen point five million that shows as a one-time expense on the SIP. That is basically to pay for a planned expenditure for the I Street Garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's not like an out-of-the-blue one-time expense that we hadn't anticipated. It it's using money that was set aside.
For that purpose.
Several years, as I understand. We got the garage. Now we're going to pay for it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I I think along that line, just for everybody to understand, even though it's a one-time expense, that doesn't mean it was unexpected.
Correct. Right, that's we, we actually saved up money over a period of years. And so we had a much larger than normal. Um, unallocated fund balance. And then we utilized that unallocated fund balance, new general fund to pay for a garage, which is. Pretty unusual for that scale of a capital improvement.
And and that's also the case for the uh L Street?
L Street will actually use debt financing and um. Uh, administrative services director Olson will talk a little bit about how that's built into the budget as well.
Um, so the the debt financing is built into the, we don't have, we're not anticipating debt service in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, but we built it into the five-year forecast. And it's a a couple million dollars, yeah, three million dollars actually. So I just wanted to give you a a sense of revenue trends uh since before the. Great recession uh and where we're are today. Um, I always think it's interesting to kind of look at that property taxes up seventy-seven percent since two thousand seven, eight. And and Livermore did get a dip in property taxes during the great recession with the uh. Properties being reassessed downwards. Uh, and then the slow climb starts to be a slow climb out. Um, and then projected for the budget year twenty-two, twenty-three at forty-three million dollars. Uh, looking at the average increase over that timeframe, it's been a four percent average uh increase in property taxes in Livermore. Similarly, for sales tax also saw. A dip during the actually pretty sizable dip uh during the great recession from nineteen million in two thousand seven, eight and dipping to a low of thirteen point eight million dollars. And then and then a climb out. Uh, we had a little dip during the pandemic down to thirty-two point nine million from thirty-five. I mean, six million and then climbing back out to the thirty-nine million dollars that we're projecting in the budget year. So you had a hundred and two percent increase since uh before the great recession and that's been averaging about five and. Uh, five point four percent annual increase. Which I I will just note compared to Pleasanton, that's a a very sizable increase in prop and sales tax, you know? Is you, because you you took the Stone Ridge Mall revenues, what happened there? I think you did. So uh, this, this one, I I I put up the transient occupancy tax because this is the one that actually. Is most affected by the economy. Um, as you can tell, pretty big a a dip during the great recession, but. But during the pandemic, you see it went from three point seven million to about one point nine million and it's climbing back out again. Um, still not anticipating it to be exactly where it was before the pandemic, but it's it's getting pretty close. Uh, but overall is a hundred and eleven percent increase and that's a result of new hotels being built. As I understand, uh, as well as occupancy rates, yeah. And a seven point three percent.
So there was an article in, you know, today's paper, yesterday's. About how in the Bay Area in California, we're not recovering as quickly as the rest of the country post-pandemic. But this, and they, one of the indicators they were using was the hotels and and retail, but it looks from the sales tax and the hotel. That locally, we're doing okay and might maybe much better than the Bay Area or something. Is that the inference?
Uh, definitely on the sales tax. I think you're doing better than a lot of the rest of the Bay Area.
You you have recovered, you've more than fully recovered on sales tax and you can see that you are most of the way through the recovery on transit occupancy tax. So that. You know, that that slides a just a dramatic V-shaped one. So you can see likely next year or actually beyond twenty-two, twenty-three. That, you know, you'll be back to where you were before.
Now, do we have any data on uh jobs in the city? Because that was the other metric they were using.
We do, but not as a part of this presentation. So you've managed to to do that thing where you've asked us something that we don't have at our fingertips, but we can get back.
We try and do that.
So so I wanted to to jump in just sort of to think about this, what what it means for people. Um, and when I look at these and and I I I want to, I'm going to say three things and then I'm curious to see if that actually. Sort of corresponds to reality or if I'm making this this up. Um, so when I look at the uh property taxes, what that says to me is that the property taxes are reflecting the change in. Housing costs, which says that that's kind of, you know, that's nice for us, but it has a substantial impact on people. Would that be? Fairly accurate?
Give you a, that's mostly correct. The other thing that that includes is building, but the vast bulk of that increase is the change over time in housing cost.
Yeah. So um, the second, so the second one. Um, one of the things that we did and I I in talking to other cities, uh, you know, I I other um council members from council members from other cities, there we go. Um. The the cities that did this saw a similar kind of a pattern, which is that those cities that said, look, buy local. Here's how you could support our local businesses, saw increases in their sales taxes. And so that's what this says to me that we what we we put a really strong effort into encouraging people to. Support local businesses and that was fairly effective. Um, again, is that sort of square with, is that a decent interpretation of what I'm seeing here?
So I wouldn't want to infer cause and effect, um, but 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 absolutely. In other words, you can see that our numbers have recovered, you know, quite dramatically on there and we clearly did. Um, point out to a lot of people and I think people did think more about that during the pandemic.
Yeah. I mean, it's it's certainly has changed my behavior a little bit and, you know, it's like I'm I'm not going anywhere but Livermore to shop now. Not quite true, but um, and then of course with the the uh T O T taxes, well, you know, no one was traveling. And that's reflected here. And as we're seeing people return to traveling, again, we're seeing that. So so all of this makes great sense that this, if if what I'm saying is correct, this really reflects the reality I saw over the not last few years.
And and you're correct, your staff, um, one of the things we look for when we get the data from the various sources is, does this make sense? Um, and as we collectively looked at all of this information, it it made a lot of sense. It did seem to line up very well with our expectations about what was happening. Um, sometimes even happening more quickly than we were even anticipating right before we got the numbers. So generally. Um, this is very, very strong news, you know, coming out of the pandemic um across the board.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So this is the general fund five-year forecast I noted earlier. Um, just quickly on the assumptions. But revenue is increasing by four percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, reflecting what we expect to be pulling fully out of the pandemic. And then three percent annually thereafter. Uh, personnel services, so salaries and benefits, uh, three percent annual increase. We've built into it three new F T E annually. Uh, the service and supplies increases uh two to three percent annually, depending on the. The account we were looking at. And then also I didn't note up there, but I did tell you verbally, we've also got the three million dollar annual debt service for the L Street Garage. In this forecast. Of course, this is a forecast. We could have a recession and everything goes sideways. Uh, but those are assuming those sorts of. Generally somewhat conservative assumptions. Uh. So we would have a about a half a million dollar surplus in twenty-three, twenty-four, assuming those assumptions hold and it would be growing to seven point nine million surplus in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, and we're going to go through a slide on on PERS, uh, the CalPERS pension contributions. Oh, that that surplus going up is is being driven in in large part by the expectation of the. Pension contribution going down based on CalPERS latest um extrale analysis that they sent us.
So one of the things we want to do is to temper expectations here. Um, we would, we would build. Um, ultimately our planning forward to leave a little bit of breathing room because we have a couple of things that really are going to impact us and we don't have perfect information on that. Obviously, is inflation is above the Federal Reserve's long-term target um for inflation dramatically so currently. And we expect the Fed to continue to take actions over the next year or two to try and bring inflation back in line with their long-term objectives there. Um, if they do it just absolutely perfectly and a miracle occurs, they'll be able to do that without a major impact on the economy. That really is kind of extraordinary to believe. So we do expect some impact. In fact, there has to be an impact on the economy or that tool doesn't work well. Um, so at the very least, an idea of perhaps flattening sales taxes or some other items, even if we don't go into a full-fledged um recession. Um, we do expect some issues around there. The other piece is while we are in long-term contracts with our labor groups currently, with the exception of fire. You've heard a little bit about that over time. Um, the uh, and they are uh programmed in at these appropriate costs. We do expect at the end of that time. Um, if inflation, you know, keeps at its current pace, ultimately we'll have some catching up to do to get back to the market here. So we do want to have a little bit of breathing room built into our models because there's. At least two and maybe three big uh items outstanding. Um, that we want to be well-prepared for and this budget does that. And even with those assumptions, you'll see you, you, you still have a a little bit of room to deal with those uncertainties moving forward.
Okay.
With that, we wanted to shift gears a bit and um so. That what we've been concentrating on now is sort of the second year of your two-year budget. And we wanted to uh for a moment to switch gears and take a much longer lookout into the future. The council has tasked staff with um addressing as we came out of that last recession now more than ten years ago. Um, all of our obligations, you'll remember. Um, that we had essentially internal service funds that we had purposely underfunded to make it through the worst of that recession, things uh. Like our fleet program or our IT program or our building repair program. All of those were and have been, uh, along with our workers' comp programs, um, appropriately funded um to deal with those issues. That left three long-term uh sets of obligations, which were dramatically larger in scale. And those had to do with essentially your pension program for your employees. The second is OPEB or other post-employment benefits. So that is a retiree healthcare benefit. That was generally available to employees before uh two thousand and six. Um, and the last of those, of course, which is still an ongoing challenge, is uh infrastructure within the community. Um, eight years ago, the the council at that time chose uh infrastructure and asset management as its goal. And for the last three times after that, the council has chosen that goal because of course. It is a is a very large-scale and difficult one. In other words, the amount of infrastructure that we have. Um, and the funding that we're uh putting toward it to take care of it um is not in alignment here. So we wanted to walk through each of those three obligations, one at a time, and then talk about how we're going to address them or propose to address them over the longer term. So first.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry. Before we go on, I want to make sure I'm clear on the previous charts we saw. Those are all in current year dollars. The the charts we saw showing. Revenue expenditures, current year dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, I I don't think that was said. I just want to be sure that we're clear on that. Yeah, thanks.
All right.
There we go.
So um, the first is sort of a reminder of where we are on infrastructure. Um, you're all aware that the city owns over three and a half billion, that's with a B, dollars worth of uh stuff. That we use to deliver services to our residents, businesses and visitors. Um, about a billion dollars of that is owned and operated by our enterprise funds. An enterprise. Um, is this as a governmental or city operation, which is run like a business. I mean, the aspect that it charges fees for its service. Example of uh enterprises as our water service, you get a monthly water bill. Our sewer service, you give your residential customer, you get a yearly uh bill on that. Um, another example would be the airport. Um, these are generally self-supporting and the idea is to set charges and rates. Um, to fully cover the cost of both providing that current service and to provide that service long-term. The great news is for that billion dollars worth of infrastructure, that infrastructure is in really good shape overall. We have. Long-term funding plans with appropriate uh rates being set and appropriate increases being charged. So for a third of our challenge there, we we've sort of checked the box on that. And that's because we've been working for more than ten years um on both gathering data. Um, putting that into our funding model, actually doing improvements to that infrastructure over time. And gathering data on, you know, essentially how good a shape that infrastructure is. The two and a half billion dollars covers things that are uh non-enterprise items. Now, this includes things where we get other funding sources other than the general fund, for example, like streets, um, where we do get some gas tax dollars. But ultimately, the general fund is sort of the the fund of last resort on those. In other words, if there's not enough gas tax charges or fees or measure B or B B dollars that come to that. Ultimately, it's the general fund's responsibility to to pay for those things. So everything from streetlights and buildings to backing lot walls. Um, sidewalks, all of those sorts of things are in that other two and a half billion dollars worth of infrastructure. You know, because we've done presentations on this before, um, that the amount of dollars that we need to be spending to keep those uh pieces of infrastructure in good shape, we're not spending enough. Now we're attacking the challenge on a couple of different fronts. The first is. We actually have uh better information on our infrastructure than a lot of communities. Um, but that generally means that we have gone out and done samples of the various pieces of infrastructure and those tried to take representative samples of. Different pieces of infrastructure and then applied computer models to that. And so this won't be any surprise, um, but that sort of creates a wide airband around what we think we need in most of those assets. Um, so the second piece of the puzzle is to now go out and get detailed on-the-ground data about that over time. And we are just in the last phases of deploying. Um, handheld devices so that every one of our folks who's out in the field can actually enter data every time they're out in the field. So it's it's not an add-on task. It's not someone else's job. It's a part of. You know, everyone's job as they uh ultimately are out there working with this infrastructure. In addition to that, from time to time, we'll actually do focused studies on various specific pieces of infrastructure to get better data. So over time, what this will allow us to do is to refine that number. You'll also remember that the council went through a process of um. Uh, prioritizing infrastructure dollars. In other words, what do we do and how do we do it? Um, and that has to do with uh determining what uh infrastructure is highest risk. So for example, if one of the bridges fails on our roadway system, that's a pretty catastrophic failure. So we want to work really hard to avoid that sort of a failure. If there's an extra pothole, that's unpleasant, um, but it ultimately is not life-threatening, won't cripple the city financially, it won't cut off a major part of the city from another part. We went through that process, you know, so that's an example in roadways, but we went through that entire process with all of the various infrastructures. Which led to sort of what we called our high-risk or in this slide, short-term um objectives. Um, and we separated those from essentially the rest of our objectives, which was to keep the entire suite of infrastructure. More or less at the same level it is today. And that, of course, includes some deferred maintenance built into that number there. So you see the numbers on the chart there talking about a a twenty-five million dollar annual goal, which would be a twelve million dollar increase in funding. To get to that short-term funding goal or high-risk funding goal. And that longer-term goal, that twenty-year goal would be a thirty-two million dollar increase. Um, so those are some pretty dramatic numbers um that we are talking about here. So um, as you'll remember, um, our uh camp committee, um, which is our asset management committee. Um, you know, has been working on both uh doing outreach and explanation to the community. Um, working on things like a scorecard, um, so that we can actually convey to the community in a letter format, what kind of shape is our buildings in and other things as we move forward. One of the other things that you uh tasked them to do was to determine was there any community support? um for funding this through taxes or other items. And while that would have certainly helped us catch up much more quickly, um at this point, there is not community support for additional funding mechanisms. So um what you're gonna see here is sort of what do we do as two of our um long-term obligations um decrease need for cash over the long term. Um and the proposal that staff has is to sort of hold our funding of all three of those together um relatively flat. Now, of course, you'd increase that over time um with inflation. But essentially, the basic concept is, as for example, we're spending a little less money on PERS. We wouldn't put that into the to the general fund and and essentially hire more staff, for example, or buy new objects. We put that money toward essentially dealing with our unfunded infrastructure liability there. So with that, we'll move to this next slide. So um you have several of the big three there. So let's talk with, uh talk about what your OPEB unfunded liability. It is fifty-six percent funded. And while that in most tests, unless you were on a curve, uh would not be a very good score, um you do need to remember that ten years ago that that was two percent funded. So during that period of time, that is a dramatic increase um in a um liability. And so um your unfunded liability was more than a hundred million dollars. And to have that uh reduced um to uh thirty-five million dollars is quite dramatic. So two things obviously happened because those two numbers don't go together unless you have one more piece of data, which is we actually changed what the benefit is over the long term. We worked with our employee groups and we agreed to cap the maximum amount uh of the monthly payment. That means for people who were a decade or two out from retirement, it meant they had time to plan to put other resources toward that retiree medical. For those who were just retiring, it had very little impact on them. So it ultimately was seen as a fair way to deal with that long-term obligation on the, from an employee relations side of things. Um and then, of course, we'd made our annual contributions every year to that program. Um you'll see uh in addition that this is our baseline here um and that we're also proposing to apply some one-time revenues um to uh pay down your current OPEB obligation. And in fact, uh if you did that, um that would take your funding rate uh with the pre-funding um up to sixty-eight percent funded. Um so even there, grading without a curve, that you got to a C minus, that's pretty good. We would target essentially about eighty-five percent. On OPEB is relatively full funding because OPEB, you are contributing to a trust. And once you put a dollar in there, you can only get that back after the last employee who is using that benefit no longer needs to use that benefit, i.e. dies in the case of retiree medical. Um so that's many decades away. So while we want to make sure we're adequately funding um this, we want to make sure we're also not overfunding this. Um so what that does in the in the short term, when you essentially contribute dollars, is it reduces your annual contribution um necessary from the general fund. So if we were to commit ten million dollars of this in one-time revenues, you'll remember these are the revenues that are a combination of cash on hand and the back payments from the two laboratories. So that's one-time revenue. It happens because it's three years glued together. We don't want to, again, depend on that for forward-going revenues. And this uh also helps align, those are past revenues aligning with essentially a service which has been uh delivered in the past too. So we're accomplishing a number of goals by using that prepayment. It frees up a million to a million and a half annually going forward, and our proposal is to designate those dollars um toward infrastructure um to help in that overall plan.
I know we want to also note that the ten million dollars is is what we estimate or approximately would get from one-time three-year payments from the two labs from the business license tax.
On the next slide. Let's talk pensions first of all. Um uh you'll remember, we've told you a number of times that um there was a multi-pronged process to deal with um our pension obligations. The first and most dramatic of that was the state has actually changed essentially the the pension system offerings that cities give. So uh for new employees, um we uh actually have what's called the Pepper program. And that is a program where uh the retirement date is later um and the percentage of salary um that is accrued each year is a little bit lower. So it's a more affordable program overall. So it's that change in the actual um pension system um which is leading to sort of that downward trend. The dollars here, the difference, the eight point nine million dollars that you see out there at twenty forty-one is our ongoing obligation. So that's what it takes every year to just pay the bills, okay? The twenty-five point nine million dollars, which we are paying this year, is dealing with an unfunded past liability. Um and essentially, the program has a a required period of time um that is written into state law where the state essentially has to catch up. And so that's why these numbers are so large. So the numbers between that twenty-five point nine and that eight point nine are estimated. So that means you should sort of assume that there's an airband plus or minus in any given one of those years. The eight point nine number is a set number though, um relative, um because the unfunded actuarial uh amount there has to be paid off by that year. So if the stock market does incredibly well, um then that curve in between will be a little lower than it's shown here. If it doesn't do well at all, it'll be a little bit higher, but we still have that sort of downward trend. We're quite certain of that. You know, your your results are gonna vary in any given year here moving forward. And ultimately, the new rules that are in place um are beginning to have a real impact. To give you a sense of scale, in Livermore, now more than half of our public safety folks are under the new pension program. Um and uh we are north of forty percent of our miscellaneous employees. So there's really a fairly dramatic shift which is happening in just another couple of years. Both safety and miscellaneous employees, more than half of us, who will be in miscellaneous is the word they use for all the rest of us. I don't know why they call this miscellaneous, but that's the term, non-safety uh folks, um will be more than half of those folks. So that's really what brings sustainability to that program overhaul in the long term. So essentially, taking your OPEB obligations, which is that blue line there at the bottom, which has to be concluded in thirty-six, thirty-seven, which is thirty years after the closing of the main program in two thousand and six. That's a requirement. So we again have to get to zero by thirty-six, thirty-seven. Um and essentially, the decrease that you saw on the previous slide from uh the uh PERS payments there in the green-ish color. Um you'll see that that increases the uh purple area, which is the dollars that you're setting aside for infrastructure every year um to allow that to grow over time. So by twenty forty-one, um we're not going to be contributing to OPEB, um which frees up dollars there. And essentially, uh we will have an eight point nine million dollar pension payment. Um and that will allow essentially twenty-seven point two million dollars to go to the infrastructure reserve. Give you a sense of scale on average over the last few years, we've been spending somewhere in the neighborhood of ten or eleven million dollars a year on on rehab. In fact, you'll see that in your capital improvement program. Your projects are identified when they're actually doing rehabilitation uh versus essentially capacity um expansion or a new uh project. So you can actually track that. The council's asked for that several years ago and that's now in your um CIP. Um so it also uh increases that baseline, two million dollar infrastructure reserve by a three percent annually. So you can see that there, again, obviously, we'll have to adjust that over time, but that's giving the idea is trying to keep that in in uh slightly growing to keep up with inflation. All right.
So I have on this other chart, just to make sure, because Vice Mayor asked the question, I just want to get it clear. The blue and the greenish are actually the dollar amounts even in those year dollars.
Yes.
Okay. But the purple, if we're gonna do it in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, means that actually, as inflation occurs, that number gets much bigger.
Yes, and that and that's why you see, if you look super carefully and squint, that 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 line's not perfectly flat. It's not horizontal, it's actually tipping up just a little bit, that infrastructure piece.
I was just thinking though, that if over twenty years at three percent compounded, that's that's a big difference.
So it it's the two million that's compounded by the three percent. Both the the pension and the OPEB have built-in inflation and factors in of approximately three percent into their calculations and so.
So so that number, in other words, the mon- money that will be freed up will so if you, for example, wanted to also increase the overall contribution to infrastructure by three percent, not just your base case, it would go up even more.
That's what I'm trying to get at, because if you go a few slides back, you know, our our gap is a a lot, right?
Yeah.
And it's that gap that's actually, let's see, what's that number?
The thirty-two million dollar increase.
That's the one, because that's gonna be in you know, the
Future dollars, yeah.
Right? So that's the thirty-some million that increases at compound rate at three percent, not the two million.
Got it. Yeah, I would agree.
So I just want to point out that even though we've got the uh OPEB and the pension and they're gonna be freeing up money, we have a significant gap with respect to our infrastructure and this doesn't solve it.
Yep, this is one piece of a multi-pronged plan.
Right, but I just want to make it clear, even though the community's, you know, appetite for a tax increase wasn't there, that doesn't mean the problem isn't there. And it's a big problem because it's the thirty million that gets increased by the three percent.
Yep.
Good point.
And obviously, you know, a- anybody who sort of knows all tricks, sort of the rule of seventy-two, you take, you know, three percent into seventy-two and it figures out how long it'll take to double. And so you kind of go, oh, that's gonna be a big number.
That's right. And so that I just wanted to point that out, that we, uh this is a very good approach here and it's a prudent thing to do. And we got it, you know, we in the near term, putting the alec, the money towards OPEB, it is the right thing to do and but we're, we we still have this as an issue. And it was, you know, we were leading other cities in acknowledging this component of financial stability. Because most other cities just put their heads in the sand and don't acknowledge what's going on. But we have, and that's why we've been focused on this for a long time. And I think as we've also pointed out, because of the camp committee, we're now, and those devices you're talking about, we're now seriously uh zeroing in on exactly how much it is. But it's a big number, it does have some uncertainty in it, but the fact that it's big is not going away.
It will not be small. Um it, you know, there there's an airband band around what we, those annual contributions, but it's not zero. Um and it's not even single digits. It's it's a, it's a big number of millions of dollars. And so this is meant to simply give you an idea that there's a couple of things going on, that the growth is relatively, um you know, on a percentage basis, it's wonderful. You know, going from two million up to nine point nine million by twenty twenty-eight, it's a pretty dramatic increase. However, that's still sort of fo- uh falls uh short of where you want to be. There's a period of years, sort of in those middle years there, where it's relatively flat, so there's relative little growth. And the growth sort of at the end there happens when OPEB falls off completely. And then you're getting very close to the end, you know, on the um pension side of things.
So can I have a quick question? I I wanna, don't want to go too far before I ask a question or two. Following up on the mayor's point, ignorance is bliss until your bridge collapses. So I, so having been part of that early camp committee, I feel like we know the size of our problem.
Mm-hmm.
And we have good tools and good data acquisition systems now that we are going to understand where we are at almost every moment. And just to reiterate what you said, we are covering the high-risk items. We're not at any risk of having bridges collapse. Um we are fully funding the the things that we think relate to public safety and and the highest-risk items, right?
Yes, and this gives us the ability to do that. As we get better and better data in the field, if we ultimately discover, um you know, which we don't expect, that something's in a lot worse shape and it's a critical piece of the infrastructure. The other piece that this does for us is it gives us a funding stream over time. So if we ultimately did an inspection three years from now and found for some strange reason, the bridge had, you know, was in massively worse shape than we expected it to be. We have the ability, you know, through essentially a certificate of participation or similar instrument, to pull money into whatever year we needed to be pulled into. And again, that's why it's important to sort of, again, a- a- as you've collectively pointed out, this doesn't solve the problem, but it puts us on a path toward ultimately be much more financially stable and allows enough resources to deal with those issues that will be high-risk and emergency. We don't perceive those in the short run at this point, but as we get better and better data from the field, that's where we're gonna find out, whoops, that particular asset isn't in the shape that the computer model says it should be uh when we went and did a detailed look.
So so the other thing is, we're we're trading off these three variables and and this approach, which defers funding to asset management to do better on a bottom-line basis by paying down the OPEB now, right? I mean, it it is optimizing a three-variable problem so that overall, in the fullness of time, we are doing a better job managing these resources. We will be able to pay off more of what we need to for infrastructure, but we but we do better in the in the near term by spending the the dollars on OPEB and the pension. Is that
It warms my heart to know that we're optimizing a three-variable equation. And very few council members would have put it in that way, but that that's exactly right. And and why is that? What, why does it make more sense to put money um to these various things in that order? And it has to do essentially with the cost of not doing that, um or or the opportunity cost, as it were. If we set the money aside in an infrastructure reserve and and it sits in the bank for us, that means that it makes on big, big round numbers, about one percent. By paying down our more expensive obligations like the pension and OPEB, um we earn a much higher return by setting money aside in a trust or by making our our pension uh payments when they're due. Um and so, you know, in the neighborhood of s- of six and three-quarters percent on those. So ultimately, to deploy the dollars that we have effectively and efficiently, it makes sense to to pay those two things off, both because we have to. And second of all, the consequences of not doing that financially would eat away at our ability to to make any progress on infrastructure. That's why the order is the way it is. But we've optimized a three-variable equation. There's not very many councils that would have characterized it that way, but yes, that's what we did. All right.
Well, a a couple of things. One is, you know, we're not talking uh about, you know, risk to public safety as the overall big number. The, as you alluded to earlier, you know, we don't, we don't have any assets that are in that state. But the real thing is, we have relat-, you know, some of the assets are relatively new. And the question is, do we maintain them at the quality they are now? And as anybody who has any kind of asset, a car, a house or whatever, uh there's always the temptation to do deferred maintenance, I mean, to not do the maintenance and defer it, and that's when you get in trouble. And so we're talking about is making sure we can adequately assess just how much maintenance we have to do in order to keep up the overall quality of the assets. We, it would be, you know, we wouldn't be so derelict as to let it go to the point of safety. But so I just want to point out, the the estimates that we're after here is what does it take to maintain it at the current quality? And some of the choices that we have to make as a community, if we don't have the money, is which ones do we let go to lesser quality in appearance, for instance, and such. That's, that's kind of the nuance around here. And the the other thing I would want to say, you could take, you you could maybe take a little more credit for this optimizing this the three uh variable problem. Because it didn't just happen by magic that this um OPEB went down. You were given the challenge to do it and you did it, and you, along with staffs, and that was no easy feat. So I I, you know, just want to make sure you get the proper credit for what you managed there.
Appreciate that, Honorable Mayor. Um because, yeah, when you have a hundred million dollar um unfunded liability and no plan moving forward and that number looks like it's going up every year and your entire general fund is about that scale. Um you know, that is something that the council was very direct that they wanted addressed. And then um we came up with a plan, we worked with our employees to make that plan be real. And then the council, every year since we've had that policy in place, has fully funded that. Um and it's no fun to fund things from the past, um deferred anything, having that funded is not fun. Um but it is so incredibly prudent and the community is in a very different spot than it was a decade ago coming out of the recession as far as our our um flexibility. And um in other words, one of the things, and you'll remember when we used to show the slides that showed essentially how much of our total budget was going into staff. It was an extremely high number. If you put sort of staff and buildings and equipment behind it, we were north of ninety percent. In other words, there was no place to make a cut that didn't ultimately result in a um loss of service. One of the other things that's gonna happen over time is as we begin to fund infrastructure in a much larger scale on an ongoing basis, in the case of a relatively short interruption in revenues, like the most recent one we saw with the very short recession during the pandemic, you wouldn't have to dramatically cut services you wouldn't have to dramatically cut services during that period of time, because you both have fully funded reserves, you have some dollars going to your OPEB reserve, um, and you have dollars going to infrastructure, um, which can be adjusted, um, especially in the very short run, over a couple of years to help you cushion those blows, so your overall finances are much more resilient than they were a decade ago. Um, and we're able to deal with those uncertainties, which will certainly come, um, without a dramatic reduction in services.
And, and just add, is it what's going on here, what, what's important? I mean, one of the things that's important we're doing tonight is setting policies and emphasizing certain, certain things, so that as we have future councils and staff, that we, we can, you know, focus on this going forward much more easily, because there was a mistake made when we got this OPEB. And what we're also trying to do is make sure that the future doesn't repeat that mistake.
Yeah, and, and clearly what happened in that case, and well, in a couple cases, we did it a couple times to ourselves, which is, um, assuming that the past is an indicator of the future. Um, of course, what happened in a very short period of time, and there was dramatically sharper medical inflation than we had experienced in the two decades before that. And the case in, in the case of pensions, it was essentially underperformance by a stock market because of changing demographics, uh, over time, and essentially having to chase essentially, uh, returns, which led them into a position where there was higher volatility. Both of those meant that we dug into holes, um, that we certainly, I think, are a lot more aware of going forward, and, and I think you're exactly right, Honorable Mayor. Conveying the lessons that we got to learn the hard way, um, you know, having somebody be able to read about that, that's a lot more fun. Um, because, boy, when you have to learn it by experience, that's a, that's a cruel teacher sometimes. Wanted to give you a, a, a quick look into, um, essentially things that we're going to bring back for future council consideration. Um, you're aware that you have set up an OPEB trust, um, which is a type of section one fifteen, um, trust, and and, uh, we'll bring back for council consideration of essentially a one fifteen pension trust. Um, and that can be part of your overall, um, general fund, um, investment portfolio. Um, and so, again, for a limited amount of dollars, these trusts, uh, this trust essentially could cover contributions that would be made to the, um, for PERS in any given year, and you can put ultimately multiple, uh, years' worth of dollars into that, they can only be used to make PERS payments. So from that perspective, it's just like the OPEB trust, the difference, of course, is that our purse bill is much larger than our OPEB trust in any given year, so getting those dollars back out of this trust creates both a, an opportunity for a, a appropriate diversification of your portfolio, and essentially as one more buffer against a downturn. Again, this is sort of an introduction of the idea that we're gonna bring something back for the council to consider. Um, this is, uh, a large item all on its own, um, which we will bring back with more information. But the idea there is that by, uh, by creating a trust in this area, you will again create some more financial resources that can be used to address your current outstanding obligations.
Does it look like you're gonna bring this back with the budget or separate from the budget?
Separate and later, um, because we're, we got a lot to do, um, on that one, and this is one that we need to have a little longer conversation with all of you, um, to make sure that, uh, we are completely and perfectly aligned, but we do have a few things that we are gonna be bringing back, and and we'll touch on those at the very end.
Well, but I, I think what we can indicate, uh, tonight is that that concept is, um, directionally correct.
Yes, so our, our, what we'd be looking for you is, is acceptance that we could bring back this for further discussion. Um, you're not proposing to adopt it in any way, shape, or form, but we did wanna warn you rather than, you know, drop something on, on you out of the blue. Um, you know, other communities have used this particular tool well, but we do wanna make sure, um, you know, that there's complete understanding about the pros and cons of sort of using this sort of.
Yeah, what I was alluding to, it makes enough sense, there's worth spending time to, uh, uh, flesh it out.
Very good.
All right.
Can we go through this one? So, uh, this is a table, so I get to talk about the tables. So, uh, another option is to allocate, um, some or all of the, uh, budget surplus. This is, shows what the actual budget surplus has been since twenty sixteen seventeen through the most recent year that we closed, twenty twenty-one. Uh, as you can see, it's between eight point two million and two point one million dollars, the surplus, it averaged six million dollars a year. Um, if you decided you're gonna do fifty percent, and we were looking at the average, that could be another three million dollars that could be deposited into the infrastructure repair and replacement reserve, in addition to the savings from OPEB payments and, and the pension contributions.
So on, on this one, you've, yeah, I'm on the right one, yeah, you say allocate, you know, fifty percent. The other fifty percent, though, wouldn't, would go to unallocated?
In, in this example, it would, and certainly the council is, um, able to, you know, pick any number between zero and a hundred.
Well, what I wanted to, uh, say in my own feeling is that our, I believe our unallocated reserve amount is what we targeted, and that we don't need to change it, is that correct?
Correct, so, so in other words, um, we most recently targeted unallocated reserves for saving for our IC garage. We have accomplished that, and that will be paid for out of the funds on hand. We have noted our other big, uh, um, allocation of dollars downtown will be paid for through financing, that's your L Street Garage. So we don't currently have a, a need for unallocated reserves that staffs identified.
So, my feeling is that we just saw earlier that there's a significant need in the infrastructure, that we just take whatever we have and put it there. Uh, any future council is free to move it at any time. But the problem I have with allocating more to the unallocated reserve than our policy is that it is sitting there, and people might think that we ought to spend it. So I, so my preference is allocate at this point, since there's no other uh, pressing object, uh, you know, thing, just put it all there, and we can deal with it later if something else arises.
And so we're looking for agreement or disagreement on that point, we, we are going to ultimately bring, one of our tasks is to bring back a policy for you. Um, and obviously, that's council-controlled, so that can be adjusted in the future, but it would give a pretty clear direction of what, what this, uh, what our, what our direction is at this point.
Okay.
So the other piece that I would propose as a part of that, and we'll bring back something for council consideration is it might be our most, a- as we talked about that three-variable problem, uh, might be the most effective to actually have it, um, allocated to OPEB, and then free up additional dollars essentially, um, for annual. And that would essentially deal with, you know, something in a more, uh, effective way, as far as getting a higher return on dollars, and provide a little more flexibility going on with your overall general fund, um, that you could then apply to, uh, infrastructure, much as we have proposed with that ten, ten million dollars.
That makes sense, just that, but the idea is, don't put it in.
Questions on, on what we're talking about here as far as the allocation of budget surpluses, and, uh, or around, you know, what was, what we were just discussing on that?
Just, I would agree, don't put it in unallocated, cause it's, people think it's free money, it's not free money, you have things to pay for, so.
So I had one other question, going back earlier, you know, I hadn't thought about it, but the we had to increase our reserves because of the one-time expense on the garage, but we're spending the money on the garage out of reserves. So it's a little circular, right? So the question is, and you said that we had to do that because our policy said we had to do that. But it doesn't seem to make sense, so do we, can we change our policy with respect to that, to something that makes sense?
You could, um, but the handy thing is it washes back out. Um, in other words, the, the, um, reserve is a point-in-time measurement. Um, and so, as you adopt your budget each year, your expenditures adjust.
So what it means is in the future years, it, you don't have to move over more into it, so you just did a prepayment.
We did a slight prepayment, uh, on that one.
So bringing it all together.
Yeah, so essentially, this talks about the various different funding amounts, um, to get to sort of that total dollar amount. And again, that twenty-five point eight million dollars doesn't solve the whole problem. Um, but it is sort of a, you know, dramatic change from sort of where we are putting, or the amount of dollars that we are putting in now. Um, so again, shows direction, um, obviously, we'll be talking about the implementation steps on how to do this. This gets us in, within that ten-year timeframe to those, uh, fully funding those high-risk assets, and provides an opportunity to move money around if we need to to deal with that. Um, but over the longer term, um, we'll need to have continued attention on this, this number does not include um, putting essentially our year-end balances, uh, into OPEB and freeing up additional dollars. Um, that will mean that the payoff of your OPEB liability will happen noticeably earlier than it is programmed to happen. Um, and so that will, um, provide some opportunity in those mid-range years between now and twenty thirty-six. And now, our, we're onto the CIP, right?
There's a couple of things I wanted to ask about. And I've been trying to figure out how to formulate this, so this is gonna be one of, um, those may go somewhere, may not go somewhere subjects, and hopefully it falls within the range of this, and so as, um, as the mayor was, um, talking about this not solving the problem, it's not gonna go away, there's, there's, you know, ma- many different steps towards solving the problem, but it still means there's likely to be more money going forward. So part of that is how do we, um, not make this something that we're putting upon people who live and act and use all of these sources, but make that part of the process. Um, and so, you know, that's, I think that the, uh, cap, um, oh, shoot, the outreach, the outreach has been enormously effective, um, and continues to be. But the other thing I'm thinking about is, um, when one raises money for any project, somehow maintaining isn't as exciting as new projects. Um, so I think that one of the things, again, the, the outreach has done, has made this pretty exciting, maybe it's just me, I think infrastructure is very exciting, so that might, you know, this might not be everybody. But inasmuch as that's the case, great, but I'm also wondering about some of the new projects that we do wanna take on. Um, and I'm thinking in particular about the open space in Springtown, but, you know, some of, some of the projects that aren't part of this discussion, but are, are how do we make this, how do we continue to make the city more livable? Um, and as we're thinking about funding, so thi- this is, this is ag- again, I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud a little bit, um, as we're thinking about how to allocate funds and how to raise funds, I think it's worth thinking about what is exciting, how do we make those things that are seen less exciting, but would be really exciting if like they broke, seem exciting before they break, and then also how do we balance into that, those new things that we might wanna do? Um, so I don't know if that's, if, if, I, I don't know how that fits into this discussion, but it's sort of framing the way I'm thinking about how the money, the money comes.
There's a couple of things to think about, so first of all, a- as we've discussed, the vast bulk of what we've just discussed sort of talks about a very specific policy, which is holding our contributions to our long-term obligations relatively flat, i.e. not absorbing that into the budget over time, at reallocating it to one of our long-term obligations. The second thing that we talked about was taking our unfunded, uh, in other words, our budget surpluses, um, above our reserves, and allocating that, um, to our long, uh, term obligations there. You're pointing out that, for most people, you're correct. They expect their taxes and existing fees and programs to pay for the things that already exist out there. And you're right, there can be support in the future for new things, if, if the community wanted to build something new, that would be an appropriate discussion about having new funding sources at that particular time, and, and those are often, you know, if you're building miles of trails, or a great big park, or something that was fun, and everybody decided they wanted, they might tax themselves to do something new and different. And I think that's, of course, why the heavy lifting inside the budget here is to, to do those things, cause you're right, I, it is difficult to get support um, for, um, you know, things that, that are, are being maintained, but when you do that, it does then open up the opportunity in the future to sort of say, if we did wanna change our level of service, if we did wanna do something new and different, that would be a discussion to have with the community.
Yeah, that. Do we have a long-term maintenance percentage broken, broken down into all of our capital improvement projects already?
All of our.
I like new stuff.
Oh, so in other words, what will it cost to take care of it when we actually bring something new online?
Yeah.
Yes, and in fact, a lot of times you'll actually see that in the fiscal analysis section of your, your staff report, both what those costs are and where those dollars come from.
And in, I know we have the number, right, but do, are we always adding that to that infrastructure budget, so it's all aligned, so that's why it keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, because.
One of the reasons it keeps getting bigger.
Yes, cause we're adding that there, so, um, I think we are kind of addressing the fact that it does cost money to maintain, it's just it's kind of behind-the-scenes work, so. Um, it's just, we, we, we aren't just building things without forgetting to maintain them, I think I wanna make that clear. That is already a policy, we're already doing it.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, please, but, but, I, I wasn't saying, I wasn't trying to say that at all, please. It's, uh, I, I guess all, what I was really trying to say is, part of the behind-the-scenes stuff should be, uh, the curtain should be drawn back from the behind-the-scenes, which I think we're doing, and that's, I, I, hopefully that's an effective education tool.
And at this point, I'm gonna introduce our city engineer, Bob Vin.
Sorry, um, I wanna say thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate also the time you spent with me the other day with a private, uh, discussion about all of this, so I appreciate that, I wanted to go back and discuss just briefly the new positions, um, and Mark, you, uh, you did a nice job on explaining, uh, these, I just wanted talk for a moment about the crisis intervention specialist, uh, in particular, and there's something that I know that the chief has been working on for a while, and certainly came out of the, he and I worked, the council member Monroe and I did. And I do think that one of, um, the things that you sort of alluded to, it was what does this person do when they're not out in a crisis, and I just wanted to and maybe the chief's the right person to answer this, but I, I, I mean, a couple of things that came to my mind as I was sitting here is one is would this person be involved with Goodness Village at all, for example, and I know that the person that is the director of Goodness Village certainly has a a degree in psychology, and so I know that Kim Curtis is certainly well-trained for that, but I just wanted to know whether or not uh, this person might also connect to Goodness Village, and, and the second thing that occurred to me as I was sitting here is I was out in the field a month or so ago with the HLOs, um, meaning some of the, I think, which they consider the hardcore homeless, and every one of those people, I think, either has a drug or a mental, uh, challenge, or maybe both. And would this person, rather than waiting for a crisis to occur, would they be out there on a regular basis with these people that are that are probably not likely to be housed anytime soon, or if ever? Just a couple of things, uh, chief, as you've thought about this, could you expand a little bit about where you're this, how you see this person fitting in?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question, I know that, um, hopefully, most of the time that, that is spent with the, this crisis intervention, uh, therapists will not be crisis calls. I know that they will come up, and it will be an important part of the job, but the case management that occurs when they're not responding to crisis, um, we believe will reduce the number of crisis calls we have, so if they are effective in managing those that have severe needs, along with our homeless liaison officers, and try to connect them with resources, just an ongoing attempt to try to reach out to them. Um, but I feel like this new position will just, um, make them even stronger and be able to connect better than they already do. And networking with other resources that are already in the community will definitely be a big part of that position.
That's great, I, looking forward, I think this is gonna be a challenge to hire somebody, because I think many communities are looking for, for, uh, creating the same resources we are, and, uh, if there's a way that I think any of us could help in that regard, uh, you, please let us know. Um, the other thing that I Don't see on here is one that I think, at least from my point of view. Is something that we could use as a full time public relations person. I realize we have. A communication specialist on staff, but I think we need something beyond that. And I. I admit that public relations individual is not something we. Put on our priority list, but I, as I pointed out to you the other day. Climate action isn't on our priority either, yet we're hiring climate action manager. So. I mean, I, at some point, I'd like, and I know that we had some, some of our colleagues up here. Spent some time looking at communications from the city. And I don't know that it's appropriate today, but I'd like to have a discussion sometime in the future about. Whether or not we ought to hire a public relations person and what they might do. That's all I had. Thank you.
Do you want to get some head nods on that one? I think you.
Can I get head nods or? Okay, I see.
So your, your staff would normally say that a great time about. Adding resources would sort of be at your goal setting that is coming up. But of course, that's. You know, several months away. That's seven months away, and that will be a new council that would be doing that. If you'd like to sort of see something in the interim, we can do. A little bit of work on that in between, but. That, you know, ultimately deciding sort of the amount and level and where that fits on the overall priorities. We do try and, we do try and especially for something of, this is a little bit bigger than a breadbox. So from that perspective. Christine, you want to chime in and sort of note what we are already doing in this area?
Well, I just wanted to note, this is Christine Martin. I'm your assistant city manager. Just wanted to note that we do plan on coming relatively soon with an update on our communications work that we've done to date. And that may help inform a future discussion as you move forward. So not trying to. Tell you when to have this discussion, just wanted to give you more information to let you know what might help.
And that item is returning to the council in.
We don't have it scheduled. We were thinking the June or July timeframe.
I think that'd be fine. And I appreciate that point, but I. Let's not put it off beyond July.
Fair enough. Thank you. We'll bring back the, the giant we will bring back that item no later than July.
So, so as part of that update, we'll evaluate whether we could use more resources there. Or we can always use more, but should we? I guess it's a question. Right?
So that's the second one that's important.
A couple of things I wanted to say before you go to the next one, if I may. As wanted to, we just went back to the new positions. And would just point out what fraction of those are involved with public safety and infrastructure. Right? That's the number one job of the council, and that's where the incremental increases are going. So just, you know, that's just for the people to understand. The other thing that I would kind of ask you to do is. You know, how, how would you overall characterize what you just presented to us on the budget? I'll just give you some starter thoughts. Very prudent. And that, and you know, so how would, you know, we. We're in good shape. We've got a good reserve policy. We kind of, you know. Know what we're doing, right? And is that, how would you? In your own words, how would you describe the qualitatively about this?
So qualitatively, I would compare it to sort of where we were a decade ago. A decade ago, our expenditures and our revenues were not in balance, either for short term or long term obligations. During the past decade, we brought both of those things into alignment. And that provides essentially a platform for us to solve the last of our, you know, unsolved, long term challenges. We're not all the way there yet, but we have a plan that's pointing us in the right direction. The increases that you see here, while larger than sort of our typical increases in staffing. Over the last 10 years are dealing with either specific public safety related issues, specific goal issues for the council. Or essentially dealing with areas where we are underfunded. And of course, this came from a much longer list of things. So overall, this plan is is very prudent and you sort of saw as we look forward. It puts us in a position collectively as decision makers and staff to react to those changes in the future. So you have a much more resilient budget. You know, as we've all learned, there's no extra money. Every, every dollar still has a hundred cents in it. But it allows you to deploy the resources that you have very effectively. And in a way that will be able to provide long term services at a consistent rate over time. To be able to react to changes in the future and to be able to weather. You know, unpredictable things in the future. We, the only thing we're certain is it's not going to turn out exactly as all of these documents. And you've got a much more flexible and resilient financial position. And that means that over a number of years, that repeated councils have taken very prudent steps. To not do silly things with money. And we've got lots of examples of public agencies across the country. That have not been able to do that. In addition, you've taken an extremely hard look at long term infrastructure and very, very few communities. Are doing that. So not only are you well positioned going forward, I think you're well informed about the totality. Of the obligations that it needs to maintain quality of life in the community. So. Overall, this is a very good budget and it sets us up for a lot of success in the future.
Well, thank you. And the other thing that council member Monroe bought up is, you know, what if we wanted to do something beyond now, we see. How would we do it? And if you look to the past, the way we got. You know, the library, the Robert Livermore Center and some of the stuff for the school. Jointly worked with the other jurisdictions that we made it happen, right? We, a vision was painted and, and the community supported it. Our number one priority for a number of years has been parking. And so then we've saved the money for the parking and that's how we got that done. And so any additional, you know, visioning that we do with respect to what we need beyond what we have. We're going to go through a process like that as well. But right now, we don't have any new big thing on the horizon. We're just trying to make it, just keep what we have going.
Can I sort of wrapping up on this section? I wanted to add a couple of things if I could. First of all, all these new positions, I really support these. I think they're, they're. Every one of them, as the mayor just mentioned. Affects and improves the quality of life of pretty much every member of this community, one way or another, whether it's the library. Public safety, infrastructure, sustainability, information systems. I mean, that all comes, comes back to what we provide the community. Who, after all, is paying for this. The other thing I wanted to mention is that. You know, we have adopted this conservative planning process, which is we build in some conservative. Conservative conservatism into our budgets and then a year into the two year cycle, we come back and we look at where we are. And then we're able to to judiciously add some of these. New expenditures. And I think that's become, you know, really one of this city's core values. And it is. It shows that the. The responsibility of the leadership. The excellence of the staff. It's why these things matter. It's, it's why having a responsible council and, and really qualified, competent staff members. Matters a great deal in the result of what we provide to the city. So. Since we're sort of wrapping here, I just wanted to say that I think this is excellent work and really appreciate it and just. Sort of proud, proud to have been part of this two year cycle. As my, as my second year comes to an end, in the next few months, I, I get an opportunity to say that now. So, so thank you very much.
We have obviously one more part of your presentation. We do have your capital part. So. We'll give you another bite at the apple at that point, but we've got one more speaker.
One, one, one more thing. I'm sorry. I, I wanted, I had totally forgotten about the eight positions, but I, I actually wanted to say something about the. The, the idea that, that public safety and infrastructure are a large part of this is, is true. But the other thing is, is that one and a half pieces of this really have to do with the equity and inclusion. And directly, you know, directly respond to what we were asked to do for with the community, part of which was to educate and include. And that's what the librarian position does. And part of it is to allocate resources for, for mental health and for, for crisis management. And that is what that the other does. I, I just, I want to make that very clear that this really does respond, you know, to, to that. It's not the last thing we're going to do, but it's part of, part of going forward. So. And, and then I had, I had one more thing, which is. The idea of a vision, I really hope that our visions for the future are more than providing parking for vehicles, but providing living space for people. In various ways. I understand we need to do the parking, but I guess when I think of parking garages, that's not actually. What I think of as being a vision for, for me. So.
Well, we're super excited about the new parking garage downtown, and that's a perfect segue to begin our.
It's a good, it's a very pretty parking garage.
Yes, capital improvement program. And have Bob Vin lead us through our, an update and adjustments and changes.
Bob. Thank you, Mark. I'm Bob Vin, your city engineer. And as Mark mentioned, I'm going to. Give you an update on the progress we made implementing capital improvement plan over the last year, as well as talk about proposed budget revisions. For the two years. Next slide, please.
What is that a picture of? I know it's a water tank, but where is it?
That, that's the Dalton Water Tank.
Okay.
Next. So starting off with some projects that were completed during the fiscal year. We had downtown street light enhancements, which installed 27 new streetlights in the downtown along Maple, McLeod and South M Streets. We also completed the 2020 ATP bike lane improvements, which installed buffered bike lanes on. First Street between Portola and Las Pecitas Boulevard. And we also installed some bike racks throughout the downtown, the standard inverted U. Design replaced the original hitching post style. Along First Street and then we, we put some extra bike racks. Various places in the downtown as well. So we've increased the number substantially from what we had before. Next slide, please. The real time awareness center, which Mark mentioned earlier, is wrapping up the construction. Should be done by the end of the fiscal year, I'm hoping. And that modified interior space in the police building to create a new work area and conference room. To improve efficiencies in the police operation. We also worked on a segment of the Iron Horse Trail between Isabel Avenue and Murrieta Boulevard. And that was recently completed, includes a new pedestrian bridge over Murrieta. The trail paving was done in partnership with Zone 7. And I would mention there's a ribbon cutting event for this project scheduled for tomorrow at 4pm. And the multi-service center improvements were recently completed. That created office spaces in our multi-service center building. For CityServe of the Tri Valley, a nonprofit providing homeless outreach services to the community. Next slide, please. These next two projects are wrapping up. I expect them to be open within a number of, of weeks and substantially complete by the end of the fiscal year. So the first is the I Street Garage Expansion. It added 274 parking spaces in the downtown. Connected to the existing Livermore Valley Center Garage. So we now have a total of about 774 spots in that facility. Livermoreum Plaza was constructed at Mills Square Park site. To create a plaza honoring this discovery of the element Livermoreum by Lawrence Livermore Laboratory scientists. The central feature of five foot diameter water ball. Along with the concentric steel rings and programmable lighting embedded in the concrete represents the element Livermoreum. Both of these, yeah, projects should be opened in a number of weeks. Next slide, please. And we completed a couple of projects out at the water reclamation plant. We had a project called Occupy Building Repairs. It's a multi-phase project and the current phase renovated. The reverse osmosis building into offices and work areas. And the plan is to move staff from some of the other buildings in there while we renovate the other buildings in coming years. We also installed an emergency generator at the water reclamation plant. This will allow wastewater treatment to continue during power outages. Next slide, please. This next list are projects on the near horizon. Or, well, they'll be completed in the horizon or starting. So the first four are under construction currently. El Charro infrastructure is being done in partnership with a developer at Republic Square. It is a capital improvement project. And they're nearly complete. I would look for that to come for acceptance in the next couple of months. We're also working on downtown surface parking. We've done some improvements to the Bordoni Lot, the city's leasing. And we're going to be opening that up for parking very soon. In fact, I think it was used temporarily for during the festival this weekend. And we're also working on First Street in the downtown in partnership with the legacy developer. They're doing the south side of First Street as a capital improvement project. They'll also be working on. The north side of First Street along the frontage and their L Street frontage and beginning in the fall. And the Granada Channel Pipe Repair is just getting underway. That one was awarded last. Fall, but we delayed the project to. Construct outside of the rainy season, and that will be completed before the next rainy season. The L Street Garage Phase One project, it will be coming to you shortly for an award. We opened bids on that. Just last week, and that will construct a trash enclosure and some surface parking and a Passao. Or some Passao improvements. And that's going to be in preparation for the second phase of the garage, which I don't have on this list, but that should be coming to you in the fall. Finally, the, the, these last four are coming up shortly. The Railroad Avenue improvements will add some access. Additional turn lane into the I Street Garage Expansion. And will also help support the, that Bordoni Lot parking with a crossing improvement. The water reclamation plant, primary and secondary treatment improvements is out to bid. That is a mega project. It's multi-years. It's estimated at over $30 million. So that project combined with the L Street Garage project is. Together, those two are over $60 million. So we'll be moving forward on both of those concurrently. And then finally, a couple of road maintenance projects should be coming for an award. Sometime this summer with construction in the fall. Next slide, please. So now on to the CIP budget and the adjustments. There were a number of issues that kind of impacted our ability to. Implement the, the CIP as it was originally budgeted. COVID-19 continues to impact construction activity. We've had crews experiencing delays when. They had to quarantine there. And there's also some supply chain issues where certain materials or supplies have been backordered. So that's. Caused some delays. We have. Concrete and steel costs have increased significantly. I mean, steel is up 220%. Since August of 2020. It's kind of crazy. And that has also increased or impacted the ability. To deliver some of the projects within the budget. Outside agencies have impacted on a couple of projects. I'll use Livermoreum as an example. After we had awarded the contract. Alameda County Health Department imposed a whole bunch of requirements that caused us. To exceed our 10% change order allotment on that project. Let's see, we also have had a number of vacancies in the engineering division. We're actually down 25% of. Of our fully staffed level currently. And that has also impacted our ability to deliver the, these projects. So our strategy. We went back to our stakeholders and identified a couple of projects that we kind of pushed out into the next cycle. But primarily, our strategy was to expand the schedule. Delay the project so we can keep them moving, but we do a little bit less work on them. Than we had planned each fiscal year that pushes some of the budget out into the next cycle. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the budget revisions that are proposed for the CIP. By the program area. Attachment for of, for this item includes a table that details. The line item budget revisions that are proposed by fiscal year and by fund. For each of the 90 CIP projects that were, that we have budgeted. I'm not going to go through those, but as you can see on the summary. In most of these program areas, the budget has been reduced from the original. Which reflects the delays and the reduced staffing and the need to. Elongate the schedules and push some of the work out to subsequent fiscal years. We do have two areas where we've proposed an increase. And that is in street maintenance. So we want to do a larger maintenance project than originally envisioned. Combined this year and then again, we'll put one out for next year. And let's see, the other area. Is traffic control. So we've identified an additional, some additional signal equipment that needs to be replaced because it's aging. And with that, that concludes the CIP portion of this presentation. I'd like to turn it back over to Tina.
I just have a couple of questions for you, Bob, if I can. So I'm just guessing the reasoning for. The projects you chose is that they're less engineering staff heavy, more contracting staff heavy. Or the cost of buying equipment takes a lot, but is less of a workload. This is just my.
Well, we, one of the things we did, as I mentioned, we went to our stakeholders and we identified projects. That that could have a longer schedule without having significant impact on operations. So that was really the primary. Input to which projects we moved out.
And then we just found things that were easy to do quickly, easy relatively. And moved those funds to the more slurry seals, I believe, is what we're doing. And some traffic. Expensive infrastructure.
That's correct. A project like the street maintenance where we have a consultant, you know. Doing lots of plan sheets, it's pretty cost effective to have them do more streets. From the design standpoint and the oversight of that design. So it's not a big burden on staff.
Great. Thanks for that clarification.
All right, we wanted to wrap up this evening with a quick look at what's coming next. So tonight, you've done this already through your discussion, but if there's any further direction that you want to provide to staff. On the operating budget and the CIP update. Will be finalizing the operating budget and CIP and return to you on June 13th. To bring back the update for this second year of your two-year funding program, including the budgeted positions that we talked about. And the other items that were included in the presentation. Over the coming months, there were several other items that we touched on that will be returned to the council with. The first is a long-term obligation funding policy. So that would be writing down what we drew a pretty picture of. And that policy would include both the, the holding those. Contributions to those three long-term obligations, as we said, plus inflating it appropriately, as it was discussed. As, as well as adding the year-end surpluses to that balance. And so the policy would be that those would go through essentially OPEB on their way to freeing up dollars for your infrastructure contribution. And but that'll, that essentially funding policy will return for your consideration. Your infrastructure reserve use policy. So once we put money aside for infrastructure. What projects are eligible to use those dollars? Because once you have a, a money available. We want to be clear about what the council's direction is for use of that. And while some of it's fairly obvious, essentially an expansion of or brand-new object is sort of not what we're talking about. It's a little more complicated as you get into the nuances of repair and replacement and expansion. So how does that work? And we'll be bringing that back. How is that used? When does the council make those decisions? Again, to further discussion and consideration of adoption of a section 115 Pension Trust Fund. Is the last of those future items. And the, those items beyond sort of the budget consideration on June 13th. Will come to you as separate items over the course of, we expect the summer as we move forward here. And with that, that's the conclusion of staff's presentation. If there's any further discussion, direction or questions. And your staff is available for, for, for questions and available for the direction as well.
I wanted to jump in with, just on the CIP. And to the items that were chosen. So first of all, I just wanted to compliment you on the quantity of work that's being done. Particularly given the challenges. It's, it's good to see these, you're just sort of laid out. And catalog. But the other thing is, is that the, the choice of street maintenance and streetlights, these are things that are. They're not catastrophic if they fail, but they really make a difference in the way people feel, they'll, they'll look and feel. That's the un. Taken for granted stuff. And I appreciate that you're, you're taking that where, you know, you're using that money where you can to go to, to make a difference citywide. It, where there's other areas where, all right, we've got to slow down. This is, this is a place where you can take and make a difference. So thank you. And thank you all.
Yeah, I think I agree with Councilmember Monroe. It's a nice list of, the only thing that I would. And I've. Sort of puzzled about this in the, with several of you before, but the streetscape that Legacy is doing. I know has been horribly lengthy and seemingly they. I know they apparently they made a mistake on some of the forums or something. But the new forums have been in place for weeks and nothing happens. I mean, can you? What have we learned? From this project?
Well, I think what your city manager learned was, on the one hand. Building infrastructure along with related development projects. When the infrastructure is incredibly straightforward and simple is probably a good idea. Building roads along with that subdivision to support that, that housing complex. Building more complicated infrastructure is, you know, I think not terribly cost-effective in the long run. I mean, generally, it has some real advantages as far as timing. But you see sort of when the disconnect between our ability to actually drive the actual capital projects forward. You know, in the public-owned areas, you, you see the downside of that. So. I think we're going to be taking a very close look at when we sort of have mission-critical pieces of infrastructure. That are tied to, to development projects nearby about who takes over management and ownership of, of those items more directly. Because I, I think this is a very complicated, it looks pretty straightforward, but in a very old downtown. You have the chances of discovering stuff that you didn't, didn't know was there and that happened. You have the, the chance of things being a little different in the field than you expected and that happened in this location. And then you have the disconnect between the, the people who are ultimately directing the work and the people who are paying the bills. And that's, you know, I think all of those things combined in this particular case and in this particular labor market. And this particular contractor market to sort of create the outcome that we saw.
I think, and I, I understand all those issues, but I think what. Frustrates me and some of the folks that talk, that I speak with, with whom I speak. Is seemingly nothing happens for weeks at a time. And that's sort of where we are right now.
So as, as an example of what caused some of that delay. COVID paid a, played a big impact. We were scheduled to have the Flex Zone concrete poured last Thursday. And the concrete crew came down with COVID and had to quarantine. So. That got put off for, I don't know how long. Hopefully they'll be back next week.
Okay, thanks.
One of the final things I wanted to do before we wrapped up on, on staff is to, to note that. We budget as an executive team, the items before you this evening were vetted by all of the department heads. We made these decisions, recommendations, especially on staffing as an overall team. And I want to appreciate all of the executive team who participated directly in that process. Managers from throughout the organization guide us all over the changes that you see today. And I want to thank them. And of course, in particular, I want to thank the finance division. It's, it's an extraordinarily busy time of year and they're shorthanded. Finally, our administrative services director, you wouldn't know it, but she is very new on the job for us. And she prepared this document without a finance manager. Because of course, we lost Pavna, who ultimately retired from the city. So being extraordinarily shorthanded, being brand new. Having a city manager who wanted to convey a lot of things that you normally wouldn't put into a single-year update of a two-year budget. Did it not only with incredible ability to get the technical work done, but with good humor. So I appreciate the, the contributions across the entire organization. But particularly those people who have their hands directly on the messages that you saw tonight. And all of the documents and data necessary to bring this to you. So. While this isn't, some people don't think this is sexy. I do. I think this is incredibly interesting and useful. And is the fundamental stuff that we build a great service and ability to create quality of life for the community. So I, I'm just super excited about being able to bring this forward. And lots and lots of people throughout the organization contributed to that and we wanted to point that out to you.
Okay, yeah, I would say that, you know, over, you've been doing this, I've been doing this for over a decade. And this is another quality job. And I, what you just mentioned, going through the transitions and you would never, no, no, you didn't miss a beat. So it's, it's really good work, very much appreciated. And I, I think also it was very helpful to have everything explained, you know, all the key points. So it was well done. So thank you. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting to a. Regular city council meeting on Monday, May 23rd, 2022 at 7:00 PM. At the Civic Center Meeting Hall, City Council Chamber. 1016 South Livermore Avenue. So, good night.